If we can all silence our cell phones and rise for the pledge leader.
Pledge leader to the flag, United States of America, to the republic which is paying one day under God into physical liberty.
Thank you. Roll call. Ms. Purple.
Mr. Tosti, Mr. Kezak.
Here.
Mr. Strauss.
Here.
Dean.
Here.
Things all here. We also have township manager, Mrs. Tilly Coles, township solicitor, Mr. Esposito, and township engineer, Mr. Kessler in attendance tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Purple, and I would like to welcome back the board. For those joining us tonight, this is our first meeting with the full board in person since prior to the pandemic. So it's a sign that we are trying to get back to some kind of normalcy here in the township and our community and throughout the whole state and the country. So welcome back, everybody, and it's good to see everybody live. With that, we'll do announcements and special items. But before we start, for those on public comment who public comment on Zoom, residents are encouraged to provide feedback to the Board of Supervisors before and during the public meeting. Anyone providing public comment must begin by stating their name and address for the record. Public comments during the meeting can be made via Zoom and in person. Residents will be able to join the Zoom meeting audience online or by dialing in. Participants can find tonight's meeting link on township website, and dial-in participants can participate in tonight's meeting by calling 1301-715-8592 and entering the meeting ID, which is 867-9190-5582, followed by the pound sign. To make a comment, dial 9 to raise your hand, or dial 9, star 9, to raise your hand, and when you're called on, dial star 6 to unmute yourself. In-person participants may stand up and speak at the podium when prompted with their mask on. Our next Board of Supervisors meeting will be May 3, Monday, May 3, 2021, at 7:00 p.m. I have a proclamation for Local Government Month, which I will read. Local Government Month in Middletown Township, whereas local governments throughout the Commonwealth provide valuable services to the citizens of the communities they serve. And at end, whereas in recognition of the work performed by local governments, the Pennsylvania General Assembly designates the week of April 12 through April 16, 2021, as Local Government Week in Pennsylvania. And whereas, local government is often referred to as a level of government that is closest to the people, providing important citizen service such as law enforcement, public health and safety, recreational opportunities and public works. And whereas, many individuals, including employees at a township and numerous volunteers, participate in providing local government services to the residents and businesses in Middletown Township. Now therefore, be proclaimed by the Middletown Township Board of Supervisors that April 2021 is hereby designated as Local Government Month in Middletown Township, and be further proclaimed that the Middletown Township Board of Supervisors will continue to work to promote civic education and engagement in an effort to educate citizens about their local government, strengthen the sense of community, and engage the next generation of local government employees and volunteers, adopted this 19th day of April 2021. Moving on, we have Park and Rec, Resident Resignation Recognition. Mr. Capar, please don't resign.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Good to see everybody back in place. Back in 2012, Middletown Township Parks and Recreation Department started a walking program. We encouraged people to get out and to walk. It was before Fitbits. It was before Apple Watches. We would give people a book, where to walk, a pedometer, and a little pencil from the Middletown Country Club, okay? And we said, go out and walk every 100 miles, we'll give you a t-shirt. So Noel LeBeau over on my left shoulder had a, did his first 100 miles, came in, and we gave him that walking t-shirt. Did his second, we gave him another t-shirt. Kept coming. We gave him basketball t-shirts, kickball t-shirts, everything t-shirts, whatever we had laying around. So a couple of years went by. In November of 2020, we got a call, we got an email actually, and Noel said, I did 1,000 miles. Can't give him another t-shirt. So it was like, okay. So with that, we would like to give him a certificate of achievement and a Fitbit that he says he has family members that will help him program it. So Noel, on behalf of the Park and Rec Department, I'd like to award you with the certificate of achievement for walking 1,000 miles within the community and your own Fitbit.
Beautiful. Thank you very much.
Enjoy, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. I'd like to say one thing.
Go ahead. Right on the mic.
The more you walk, the longer you'll live. It's a proven fact. So let's all do it. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Nice to meet you. One other announcement I'd like to make. In recognition of Earth Day, the Parks and Recreation Department is hosting a park cleanup this Saturday, April 24, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. People can register to pick up trash at any of five designated sites. Volunteers from the township, Park and Rec Board, and EAC will lead volunteers at each of the five sites. Trash bags and gloves will be provided. We turned this into a fun competition. The group with the most bags of trash cleaned up will win a prize from the Diane Loomis Realty team. The five sites and registration information are available from the Middletown Parks and Rec Facebook page or by calling the Parks and Rec office. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Capar, and congratulations. Further on the EAC Committee, the Middletown Township Environmental Advisory Council is hard at work on our climate action plan, and the climate action plan will serve as a guide as we work towards lessening our community's impact on greenhouse gas emissions. As Earth Day is around the corner, the township is asking for your feedback about how we can better prepare our community for climate change. A brief survey is available on our website at www.middletownbox.org/climatesurvey, where you can share your thoughts and ideas about how we can become a greener community. And I do have one other announcement that's not on the agenda. It's a vaccine clinic. The Middletown Township Senior Citizens Association is partnering with Rite Aid to hold a Pfizer COVID-19 vaccination clinic on Wednesday, April 28. To sign up for this clinic, please visit our website at www.middletownbox.org/covidclinic and fill out the interest form. Someone will call you to confirm your appointment time. With that, we'll move on to public comment on non-agenda items only. And seeing no public comment, we'll move on to the consent agenda items. Consideration of authorizing payment of April 19, 2021 bill list in the amount of $679,533.80. Consideration of approving the April 5, 2021 minutes of the public meeting of the Middletown Township Board of Supervisors. Letter C, consideration of approving resolution number 21-113R, Barnard subdivision planning module. Letter D, consideration of approving escrow release number two for the Wawa land development on East Lincoln Highway in the amount of $46,704 for completed work during construction. Letter E, consideration of approving payment number two for the Langhorn Gables drainage improvement project in the amount of $48,609.22 for completed work during construction. Letter F, consideration of approving change order number one for the Langhorn Gables drainage improvement project in the amount of $24,825 for the pipe extension and related grading on Buttonwood Avenue. And letter G, consideration of approving payment number three for the Langhorn Gables drainage improvement project in the amount of $96,358.50 for completed work during construction. Is there a motion on the consent agenda items?
I'll make a motion to approve all consent agenda items as written.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any board questions on the consent agenda items? Any public questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, 5-0. Next on the agenda is consideration of approving ordinance number 21-05, bond parameters ordinance for the Board of Supervisors. Ms. Keely Coles.
Yes. Good evening. We have with us via Zoom Christopher Bamber from PFM, and I'll turn it over to him in a moment. And we also have Ernest Clauser, also known as Bucky, who is our bond counsel from Curtin and Heathner. You'll recall that we talked about this several months ago. We have a refunding opportunity or refinancing opportunity for one of our existing bonds. So I'll turn it over to Chris Bamber from PFM.
Great. Well, thank you very much, everyone. First of all, confirm that we could all hear and not necessarily see me, but hear me more importantly.
Yes.
Okay, great. Well, there should be a handout in front of Stephanie. Should I bring that up on my screen, or does do the board members have that in their packet?
You may bring it up. They have it in their packets, but you can bring it up.
All right. Let's see if technology works here. Can everyone see this?
Yes. Yes, we're good.
Okay, great. Well, good evening once again. A pleasure to be before the board. My name is Chris Bamber here from PFM Financial Advisors, the independent financial advisor to the township. And as Stephanie mentioned, we're here tonight to consider the parameters ordinance related to a potential refunding opportunity related to the series of 2016 bonds. If we recall, I think we talked about this last month in March, but there's about $7.2 million of principal outstanding, about a 2% existing rate, and those bonds are currently callable in the next few months here, starting in August of 2021. Market conditions have improved. Over the last month, they were a little bit choppy, just given where the bond market's expectations about inflation and stimulus and all the stuff that was kind of moving the various markets. But the bond market has recovered, and we are still seeing strong savings for this. Based on current estimated conditions, we're seeing actually about $163,000 of net savings. That's net of all costs of issuance, and that's just over 2.2% or 2.25% of refunded principal. When we think about next steps, what Bucky's going to go over here very quickly is, or very shortly, is the parameters ordinance, which is the official steps needed by the board. This authorizes the financing team to proceed as long as certain parameters are met, mainly a maximum principal and a minimum net savings. Assuming the ordinance is successfully enacted tonight, we would then continue on with the issuance process, which includes securing and updating the preliminary official statement as well as securing a credit rating. If we recall, the township was recently upgraded last year to AAA for Moody's. So congratulations once again on that. Our plan would be to have that rating updated and for these bonds, and we would expect to be pricing these bonds, hopefully in mid to late May, if not sooner, depending on obviously the availability of the rating agency. So unless anyone else has any questions related to the financial aspect of it, I'll turn it over to Bucky, who can quickly go over the legal aspect, which is the parameters ordinance.
Chris, I have a quick question. Chris, I have a quick question. What do you think our chances and thoughts are going forward about our bond rating? Do you think this is helpful for the bond rating?
Absolutely. I think any chance that the township can have to reduce its debt burden would be helpful for your credit rating. You know, the township is in very strong financial shape. The rating agencies will recognize that. So I think this debt issuance will help certainly, to the extent it produces any sort of net savings that can be put away further into your general fund balance or made available for other capital projects. So, you know, I'm very optimistic about the township being able to maintain that rating because once again, the township and its staff and its board does a tremendous job of leading it financially.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions? Any other questions? Go ahead. Go ahead.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Bucky Clauser from Curtin and Heathner. Chris did such a good job describing the transaction and the purpose of the ordinance that I won't go into detail. Essentially, the ordinance before you this evening will authorize the refunding and the issuance of new bonds for the refunding and authorize us to take all the necessary steps to get us to closing. So in a nutshell, we'll follow the timeline as Chris laid out and do everything necessary to, you know, bring this to conclusion. So unless there are any questions, that's really the legal effect of the ordinance.
Any questions for Mr. Clauser? Any questions for Mr. Clauser? Seeing none. Seeing none. I guess we can have a motion to move forward with the bond? I would make a motion to approve ordinance number 21-05, the bond parameters of the ordinance.
Second.
For refinance.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any board questions? Any public questions? Any public questions? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, 5-0.
Thank you very much.
Moving on. Thank you, guys. Moving on, number six, consideration of approving resolution number 21-14R, establishing a fund balance policy. Ms. Keely Coles.
Thank you. As a follow-up to the discussion we just had about the bond refunding, last year when we did receive the AAA bond rating, the one thing that Moody's recommended that we do is establish a formal fund balance policy. In practice, we have always followed the Government Finance Officer Association's recommendation, GFOA. And so we have had a practice of having two to three months of expenditures, two to three months of annual expenditures in the general fund balance. And so the policy that is before you this evening via resolution is to follow up with the Moody's recommendation, and we would take last year's revenue. And the resolution would identify that for the general fund and the capital fund, we would target 25% of the prior year's revenues, which is very similar to what we've been doing with the three months, two to three months of expenditures. Just so that you understand what that might mean, for 25% of last year's revenues would be just under $5 million would be the target. And you can see on the memo that we currently have 6.5 in the general fund. So we are not, we are not targeting something that's unreasonable or will be difficult. But again, as we go into this rating process, again, it's very difficult to maintain the AAA. If we are able to add the fund balance policy in, I think that we have a good shot. The other thing that you'll see in the fund balance policy is our investment fund is identified, and that's something that's already by resolution that we will keep that at $40 million. So when Moody's looks at the overall township finances, if you have a cash balance that is more than 30%, you are put into that category. And what's nice is we know right now, the actual rating scorecard includes the balance across all funds as compared to revenue as well as cash balance. That's 30% of the rating scorecard. So, and then one final thing I would just mention is that because this is a resolution, if you ever felt that maybe this was a little too ambitious, you could always just change it by resolution. If, you know, over the years, the circumstances changed, you're not locked into anything. Any questions? Any questions?
Would we be penalized if we couldn't do it for some reason?
No. It's really just a best management practice to formalize what we're already doing. But year to year, it can be discussed as we're doing the budget.
I think it's really smart that we're trying to do everything we can to maintain that AAA bond rating because ultimately, it saves the township money on our debt service, which means it's saving taxpayer dollars. So I am fully supportive of putting this resolution forward, and I like that we're not necessarily hamstrung. Should we, you know, have another global crisis, we are able to access that funding to continue to serve the residents.
And I think you answered my question where we're not tied into this. So if something happens and we need to do something with that money, we're still, we still have the ability to do that.
Yep.
Okay. Is there a motion to pass the fund balance policy?
I'll move to approve resolution 21-14R, establishing a fund balance policy.
I'll second.
Seeing a motion and a second. Is there any other board questions? Any public questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Number seven, consideration of authorizing advertisements of a bid for the Richardson Avenue Drainage Improvement Project. Mr. Ennis or Mr. Kessler?
Thank you, Mr. Tosti. Tonight, we are requesting the authorization of the Richardson Avenue Drainage Improvement Project. It's a project we've been working on for the past few months and more with township staff. It's the area between West Maple Avenue and Richardson Avenue, just up the road a bit from the signal with Old Lincoln Highway. If you're familiar with the Friends Meeting property on the other side of West Maple, the stormwater comes underneath Maple there and flows towards the properties that are between the two roads. There's a swell, you know, ditch that is supposed to carry the water all the way through there. Over the years, it's deteriorated significantly, and currently, there's quite a bit of ponding water that happens after significant storms. So this project is geared towards reestablishing that swell and also putting in some piping and inlets that will ensure the water gets all the way through. And then, once it gets to the area at the end of the project there along West Richardson Ave, there's a culvert underneath West Richardson. From there, the water's goal is to get into the wooded area that goes along eventually all the way to Gillum, to give you an idea where we are, where the water goes there. So tonight, we're requesting authorization to advertise. We would publicly bid this project in hopes that it comes below the amount that's budgeted for this year. It is in our Storm Sewer and Drains projects list for this calendar year. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Kessler. Is there any questions for Mr. Kessler? Is I just, that is right on the border of our property there, too, isn't it? And right after that, it turns into Langhorn Borough?
A bit further down, yeah. As you go past Gillum, would go into Langhorn Manor Borough. So this is entirely within the township, and it does involve a few private property boundaries as well. And we've been working with them to coordinate easements to make sure that the drainage is not only reconstructed, but then maintained over the years.
Any other questions for Mr. Kessler? I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to authorize the advertisement to solicit bids for the Richardson Avenue Drainage Improvement Project.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any board questions? Any public questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, 5-0. Next on the agenda is consideration of authorizing the award of the 2021 Road Program bid with Alternates 1 and 4, 1 through 4, to James D. Morrissey Incorporated in the amount of $1,586,176. Lower yours, Mr. Ennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So yes, in February, we came before the board for the authorization to bid. We put this project out to bid on Penn Bid, and we received bids March 25 of this year. The base bid includes 5.4 miles of roadway and 34 intersections ADA ramps. Alternate 1 would be a parking lot and paths at Twin Oaks Park. Alternate 2 is the basin retrofits, and alternates 3 and 4 are road striping. We received a low bid from Morrissey in the amount of $1,586,176, and we're asking for this project to be awarded. I'll take any questions now.
Any questions for Mr. Ennis? I move to award a contract for the base bid, alternate bid number 1, alternate bid number 2, alternate bid number 3, and alternate bid number 4, in the total amount of $1,586,176 to James D. Morrissey of Philadelphia for the 2021 road paving project.
Second.
Seeing a motion and a second. Is there any board questions?
I did just want to ask, Morrissey is the company that has won this bid the last several years. Is that correct?
No, the last two years, it was General Asphalt, but I believe the year prior to those two was Morrissey.
Okay, great. And so they've worked in the township often, and we're happy with the work. Perfect.
We actually, when we first came on the board, I think they had it for them first four years up until the last two.
Got it. Okay.
Any other board questions? Any public questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, 5-0. Thank you, Mr. Ennis. Number nine, consideration of authorizing the award of the Twin Oaks LED lighting project to bid to Armor &amp; Sons Electric in the amount of $463,725. Mr. Capar.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, again. The, for 60 years, Twin Oaks Park has been the home of organized youth sports in this area, being the home to tens of thousands of little boys and girls playing in this area. With this lighting project, when we do this improvement, it'll basically give more decades to the current and next generations to go on. I'm not going to talk that long. I gave you a packet, agenda memo, that had a bunch of history on the park, but I wanted to show you the Twin Oaks Park. Here we go. Thanks, sir. And so field number three is also called the, what they call the Babe Ruth Field, the 90-foot field. So there are eight different fields at Twin Oaks Park. This is the largest. If you could follow within the arrows, that is about over 2 and 1/2 acres of land that are going to be lit for play quality, for both baseball and soccer. The important thing is currently, the way it's lit, it's only lit for soccer. It's not enough lighting in the infield for baseball. So this is going to be a huge improvement for the community. This is, this is the inside, you know, this is what it is. It was built in 1990s. It's a lot of old stuff. This is the old light poles. You just keep clicking every couple of seconds, and I'll just, that's the look. You'll see the telephone poles with the high pressure sodium lights looking out to center field. That's looking from third base to first base. There are nine telephone poles with five lamps each of that. Go ahead, next one. You'll see a missing bulb in there. Only 13 of the 45 bulbs are inoperable right now. So it's beyond repair. This is what it looks like currently. So sodium, high pressure sodium gives you a yellow hue, plus you'll see the dark patches. Voila, what the new stuff will look like. So that is a picture of Yezzy Park, which is actually just down the street. So if you take Trenton Road, it becomes Humerville. You'll see Yezzy Park. Ben Salem Park and Rec just recently converted two of its fields to the same thing. They had the high pressure sodium with the telephone poles, put in the Musco system. The other reason is the pictures to the far right I took from the parking lot. So with the Musco lighting system, you don't get any splashover. It's just basically concentrated on the fields. You get what you get, and then there's no splashover for the neighbors or anything else like that. That's what the new architecture looks like. This is personally my favorite feature. Each of the seven new light poles will have a outlet at the bottom, so you can charge a cell phone or run a scoreboard or do something. Because at Community Park now, you're in the middle. We have all that wattage and not an outlet anywhere to be found. So this is going to alleviate that issue. Okay, so I'm going to nerd out for a minute, so stay with me. Up the top of the pole, you see a little infrared light, okay? What happens is, when they put a little higher up, follow the pole, Nick, and then with your cursor. What happens is, they put everything together on the ground, metal sleeve, metal sleeve, lights, okay? Then they're going to lower it by crane on a precast concrete foundation that's already poured in place. That infrared light has to meet a GPS light, and it has to be within one inch of that marking. So the lights are set at Iowa by Musco, so nothing else, no one knows, nobody's tinkering around with the lights. Everything is preset. Everything is preset, it comes shipped, and when that crane drops it to that spot on the ground, it's designed the way the engineers designed it. So I appreciate you for letting me nerd out there for a minute. Okay. This is Twin Oaks Park overview. This is what Musco engineers did for their lighting system. You can bounce to the next one. This is going to be hard to see, but it's the foot candles within the lights. So according to Musco standards, an infield is going to be average 50-foot candles on the infield and then 30-foot candles on the outfield, okay? So that's how it's designed. Now, in addition, this is the... There's no spillover. So what you're going to see is Point 1 immediately outside the fence. So you have 20-foot candles on this side of the fence and Point 12 on this side of the fence. That's how concentrated the light is, okay? There is one home on Twin Oak Drive that has Point 01 foot candles. The rep said it's less than an Apple Watch or less than an Apple phone. I'm just going to make sure. I tried to Google it, couldn't really, but he said it's not going to be a problem. Okay, if you just flip to the last one, does anybody have any questions?
I do. I don't know if it's a question or a comment, but I guess I'll ask the question first. This is a project that we were going to do last year before the pandemic hit, correct? And we just put it off till this year?
Correct.
So then, my son has played on them fields and I tell you, they do need the lighting. I mean, I can't wait till this project's done for the kids that go down there. My son doesn't play there anymore, but I can't wait for the kids to enjoy that. But will we have the same ability as Community Park for the lights to be shut off by the parking rec when you get the phone call?
Correct. So basically, instead of a light switch, everything is programmed by phone remotely. We set a schedule for the week and that's it. The benefit of that is, so that becomes one... We already have 12... I'm sorry, 18 fields already on the program. This will add another one. So it's easily accessible. I do want to assuage any fears. The benefit of this is it's just an operating cost expenditure because even if, with LEDs being so efficient, we could run these lights 365 days a year, 4 hours a night, and the total electric bill would be $4,000. So it's really just the expenditure of the lights putting in. I did do a comparison. Ben Salem Valley AA Soccer Field just converted to its Musco lighting, same thing. It's almost to a T, $4 per square foot to light the field. So a soccer field is slightly more... Is less acreage than this, but it turned out to be dollar for dollar, $4 per square foot to light the fields. So I know on a comparison basis, we're in the market.
Any other questions for Mr. Capera?
If you said it and I missed it, I apologize. What's the timeline, assuming we approve this tonight, to get these installed?
If you give approval tonight, two weeks, two months to get the parts. So May and June are going to be the parts, and then the month of July is the installation. Armor said they could probably do it two to three weeks. There's always the weather component based on this. But so basically, by August 1st, when they start playing soccer or anything, we expect to be ready to go. I do want to share one story. So when I met with Rick Armor last week to confirm the final details and everything, he was looking at the field and he had a smile on his face because he played for Levittown Western back in the 60s. So he's going to light the field that he actually played on as a young boy. So I thought that was a great side story.
I do have one more question on the timing to follow up to Mr. Kezak's question. So if they are going to be installing in July, isn't that still the middle of baseball season? Is it going to disrupt MAA's season or are they able to dodge when the kids are out there?
They're able to dodge because right now, they don't have lit baseball. They've never had lit baseball. They don't know what lit baseball is. So the fact that these are getting installed in July, they'll be fine. For the most part, everything ends about the same time as the school year, unless the team is going to go on further. They're not going to host districts this year or anything else like that. So it's pretty much July is going to be the emptiest month of the year for them.
Any other questions for Mr. Capera? I move to execute a contract for the purchase and installation of Musco LED lighting at Twin Oaks Park, Field Number 3, from Armor &amp; Sons Electric Incorporated in the amount of $463,725. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seeing a motion and a few seconds, is there any board questions? Any public questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Oh, we do have a question? Oh, okay. Sorry about that. Do you want to let him in?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Bellardo and I live in Twin Oaks. I also have a child that plays down at MAA. One, I want to thank you all for taking the time and making some of this happen. I just had a question for you as well. Is this part of a greater plan to not only reduce, obviously, our electric footprint, but also to elongate each of the fields at some future point so that we're all on the same system down at the fields?
You want to answer that?
Can they hear me okay?
Yeah.
So long answer is yes, it's not going to happen right away. So this is the first LED field lighting in the township to begin with. So it is one of many in a series. So yes, the timing is a little depending on financial considerations.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, so it's basically a long-term plan, but, you know, to be determined.
I mean, I know there's other work that's going to be done there at that field this year, like the parking lot down by the softball fields off of Trenton Road. They're getting done, and then we are also looking at some drainage issues down there at Twin Oaks Field. So we are addressing some of the issues down there.
That's great, thank you. Especially on the softball side, there's been some falls and we are, you know, clearly as a taxpayer and a township president, you know, we don't want to incur any liability. So we do appreciate all the efforts that are going into MAA. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, five zero. Next is number 10, consideration of rejecting all bids for the Community Park barn roof and gutter project and authorizing release of bids for the project. Mr. Capera.
Middletown Township, on March 10th, we opened up bids for this project. We had seven bids ranging from $67,000 to approximately $160,000. To rebid it immediately, hopefully that we will get a firm that complies with our responsible contractor ordinance.
Any questions from the board, from Mr. Capera? I'll move to reject all bids to replace the asphalt shingles and gutters on the barn building located within Middletown Community Park and advertise and rebid this project on PennBid. Is there a second?
A second.
Seeing a motion and a second, is there any board questions? Any public questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Capera. Moving on to number 11, consideration of authorizing a contract for the broadcast server replacement and upgrade project with Laro Corporation in the amount of $28,269.41. Ms. Burkes.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the board. It is a pleasure to be back in person and to see you all at the board and be able to interact with you directly. I'm here this evening to ask the board to consider replacing our broadcast server along with a few tweaks to bring the system up to par now that we've added Zoom and streaming on YouTube. This is a project that was originally scheduled to come before you in 2020. We did put it off to 2021, and I feel that is serendipitous because it gives us the ability now to tweak the system for the Zoom and the integration of our hybrid meetings. The project will consist of replacing the dated seven-year-old server that is only a standard definition server. The cameras and other components of the broadcast system are capable of HD and 4K distribution where the server is still the old standard definition and everything we do has to be downconverted in order to be able to get it out on Xfinity and FiOS. So we're asking the board to consider this project so we can put in place a electronics X5 server, which will automatically scale the signal for either YouTube or doing the Zoom meetings and will be able to carry the signal on a standard definition channel, which is what we have now with Comcast and Xfinity, I mean Comcast and Verizon. Hopefully, as we renegotiate our cable franchises, which are coming up in the next couple of years, and we can get an HD channel, we'll already be ready to go to be able to push the signal out on HD on television as well as the nice high-definition signal we're giving everyone on the internet. Another component would be Titler Live software, which will allow us to do the bottom thirds where the names and the subject matter of the meetings are displayed. We're currently doing that outside the system in PowerPoint. They get created, put on a flash drive. We have to come in and load it all up ahead of the meeting and make sure everything kind of scales and looks okay on the screen. And as part of the components needed for the Zoom and YouTube streams, we're going to add another audio processor to handle the sound. We still are having a few funky sound issues that this additional processor will hopefully eliminate and we'll fine-tune that. We're also going to add two PCs, two televisions, to be able to monitor all these streams that we have. One of the PCs will manage our Zoom rooms and help move the people in and out of the meetings, and the other PC will house the Titler software and also allow remote access so we can get everything ready for a meeting ahead of time remotely without having to physically be here. Laro has quoted a price of $25,538.53. That includes the equipment and installation, configuration, and training. And the township is going to be supplying the two PCs, the two television monitors, and two articulating arms so we can mount them above the console in the AV room. That's an additional cost of $2,730.88. It brings the project to a total of $28,269.41. We do have $30,000 in the 2021 capital budget for this project. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Burkes. I will say, the one thing this pandemic has taught us is to be more versatile and be prepared in case of anything else that happens, that we can continue to move forward and keep moving our township forward. And I think this is one of the things that would do that. So is there any questions for Ms. Burkes?
I just have a quick question. First of all, I think it's fantastic that this is going to... The new software will work directly with the server. I think that's going to be an incredible improvement. But do I understand correctly that currently, we're broadcasting in HD on the internet, but then we have to downgrade to analog for television broadcast?
Correct.
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 So this will eliminate that.
This server automatically is smart enough and knows how to do it. It will send the signal, it will record and send the signal properly to the source that you're delivering it to. So the stream will go out over the internet in its format while the television signal will go out the way that it needs, that we don't have to... Right now, we have a separate, basically DVR recorder that's recording the high-def signal. We take it and we downconvert it and then send it to the old server.
Got it. Well, I mean, I agree wholeheartedly with Mr. Tosti. This is, in our current environment, very necessary and welcome. Thank you.
And I want to thank Chad, our IT administrator, who has been instrumental in helping us move from straight broadcast television into the world of the internet. And also to David Kelleher, our videographer. Without their help and diligence and putting this together, we wouldn't be here today.
This does bring up a slightly broader topic, and it sounds like we're already thinking about it and it's something for us to consider over the coming months, which is, you know, we had to move to this hybrid meeting format on an emergency basis. And if I remember correctly, the timing worked out to where we had just had a meeting and so we had like a week and a half or two weeks until the next one. And it was amazing what you all pulled together to be able to manage this. This is the first time that the board and all the directors are all back in the same room together. But it does seem useful to allow the residents to continue to participate virtually if that's what works best for their lives and their schedules. I've been so impressed with our residents' contributions over Zoom and, you know, willingness to turn their cameras on and engage in civil debate and discourse even while remotely. So I think, I don't know that we would have been as brave to, you know, allow virtual participation before we were forced into it. But now that we're doing it, I don't really see a reason to stop. And I think this technology investment enables us, even if we're all committed to being together in person, we can still allow residents as a policy to continue participating virtually.
I agree. It gives us a broader window with more residents being able to participate. I remember when we started broadcasting in June of 2006, this government was dragged in kicking and screaming. Everyone was afraid, "Oh, no, meetings are going to run until after midnight because people are going to run in from home to be able to come to a meeting." And what it's done is just opened up an entire world. You used to sit in a room with maybe 20, 50 people coming, and now we can deliver this to the entire residents. And with the addition of the Zoom and the internet YouTube, we're not limited to people who are just cable subscribers. Everyone has access, and that's a great step forward.
Any other questions or comments?
I just have a... First of all, I think it's fantastic. I mean, obviously, this has taught us, this pandemic, that we need to be prepared. And even in the winter, we don't know if we're going to have bad weather. We can continue, you know, our meeting as planned. So that's fantastic. I did just want to ask, after the initial cost, is there going to be any yearly costing that we'll have to budget for?
Not any different than what we have now. What we do, we pay $995 a year for the backend programming of the cable channel when we're not broadcasting a meeting and our slides aren't running. There is public interest, things that play on, like there's weather, there's local sports. So that will continue to keep our channel populated 24 hours a day.
Thank you.
If there's no other comments or questions, I take a motion.
I'll move to authorize the broadcast server replacement and upgrade project in the amount of $28,269.41.
I'll second.
Seeing a motion and a second, any board questions? Any public questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, five zero. Thank you, Ms. Burkes.
Thank you very much.
Number 12, consideration of authorizing the purchase of one Polar Tech dual AC machine from Snapple and dealer Brian Kennedy in the amount of $14,950. Mr. Gartmire.
Good evening, board members. Before you, I'm asking authorization. This machine is used in our shop, in our mechanic shop. After discussing with Tommy Scott, which is our mechanic, our head mechanic, there is a need for this machine due to the fact that the new vehicles take a different refrigerant for the cooling system of the vehicles. And the one we have currently only handles the old type. So this was put in the budget last year, not last year, for this year, rather. And we actually went out and got three different quotes for this because it's not a CoStar or anything like that. And what you see in front of you, what you have in your packets, is the recommendation from our department.
Thank you, Mr. Gartmire. So with this machine here, would we now be putting these vehicles out to contract to have somebody else do it? And this will keep everything in-house then with this purchase?
Yeah, actually, the machine's probably used about 50, 60 times. And it's not just for, you know, recharging the AC in the cars. When they take other things apart, they have to take the compressor off the vehicle. Well, that all has to get recycled with this machine and then it gets filled back up after they fix the vehicles and that also. So it's not just, you might think it's just for the AC to keep the car cool or whatever. It's not. It does more than that. And the old machine, we are going to trade in, so we will get some money back for that machine because there's no sense of having, you know, an older machine.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Gartmire or comments? I'll take a motion.
I'll move to authorize the purchase of one Polar Tech dual AC machine from...
I'll move to authorize the purchase of one Polartec Dual AC Machine from Snap-on Dealer Brian Kennedy, Wrightstown, PA, for a total of $14,950.
Is a motion, is there a second?
A second.
Motion and a second on the floor, is there any board questions? Any public questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gartmire. Moving on to other business, Mr. Kessler.
Nothing else this evening, thank you.
Mr. Esposito.
I do have one announcement, that the Board of Supervisors held an executive session on Monday, April 12th, to discuss litigation matters and personnel matters. And also, it's nice to see everyone back in person again.
Thank you, Mr. Esposito. Ms. Tioe-Coles.
I just have one announcement. I would just like to recognize the Public Works Department. If you noticed when you came into the building, they did an outstanding job landscaping the entire property here, and so hats off to the Public Works crew for the work that they did around the building.
They always do a good job. Thank you, Mr. Gartmire, for your leadership. Ms. Payne.
I'm just grateful to be here in person today for the first time in, I think, a year, so it's just very nice to see everybody and establish some sort of normalcy, so.
Mr. Kezak.
Nothing, thank you.
Ms. Corporal.
Nothing.
Ms. Strauss.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
I would just like to congratulate our own Anna Payne. She is receiving an Alumni Achievement Award from the Bucks County Community College for her community service work. It, it's a nice honor, and I'd just like to congratulate you on that. And then I'd just like to make a comment. We've seen over the last week, week and a half, a couple of police incidents. I would like to actually thank our police department for what they do each day in our community. If it isn't the community service, the work at the schools, the things that they do in our community itself, I, I, it just goes without saying, but I really want to recognize the work that they do, because we have a top-notch police department, we have a top-notch chief, and I appreciate everything that you do each and every day. With that, we will take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second? All favor, we're adjourned.